All right, I think we're close enough to 6:30 here. We're going to call the meeting to order. The regular, we scheduled school board meeting. First item on the agenda is approval, the approval of the minutes of June 9.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 9.
Thank you, Tammy.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, I have discussion.
Okay.
I'm curious, when you read Matt Manning's letter out loud, that's going to be attached to the official minutes, correct? And then, under superintendent's report on page three, it's here. The only thing I would add is on the second line, still working on the Pleasant Street. That would have ten years, and now people know what it's about. Can I say that right? That makes sense? And that's all I have.
Any other suggestions, edits? No? I, I think that those are reasonable edits. Anyone have any comments on that? So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes with the recommended edits.
So moved.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the non-public minutes, non-public minutes of June 9.
Make the motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of June 9 as presented.
Thank you, Tammy.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion on that? All hearing none, all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. And the next item is the approval of the minutes of the special session, public minutes that we had regarding the approval of the reopening plan. That was the June 16th meeting.
Was that the 90-second meeting?
That was roughly that, yes. I'll accept the motion to approve those minutes.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Joe.
Wait before you do it last time.
Any further, any further discussion of those minutes? No? Okay. All those favor approval of those minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand.
We have five ayes and standing. And that motion carries. Next item is correspondence.
The only correspondence was what I had mentioned in my memo, which was the graduate survey for the class of 2019.
Was there any, did we anticipate a discussion about this at this point? I think we all just sort of got this.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions or anything, what usually happens is this every year, we will get a survey from the current graduating class and also one two years past. We just got that one, and we just literally received the class of 21 today, so we'll be putting that in your July packet.
Okay. So maybe it makes sense to schedule or put it on the agenda for maybe the August, maybe the August meeting.
Somebody joined online, did you? Oh.
So we have an opportunity to look them over before we plan a discussion on that. I did not receive any correspondence. Business administrative report, Jeff.
Yes, okay, the manifest is gone around. It is just a really busy time of year. People think schools out, right? When, when, you know, it's the end of, for me, it's the end of the fiscal year, beginning of our new fiscal year, setting up a whole new year. We do all the purchasing, 70% of our purchasing is done within the next month for the new school year. Sharon's closing out the year with DOE and all the, all the DOE reports, so it's pretty busy right now. In your packet, and I guess it's on the agenda, we have the audit engagement letter for the fiscal year 2021, because it's also timed for the audit. As I'm closing the books, we're going for the audit and go back, which is fine, it's pretty timing. But every year there is an engagement letter we need to move forward on, so that is an agenda item. Also, in your packet is a letter from the Department of Ed, Office of Nutrition, Home Services. And what this is, is all, this year, because of COVID, because of how we are operating food services here with all the waivers and all the free and reduce and picking up meals and dropping off meals. Every, and because it's all a federal program, every school had to be audited, had to go through this audit with the Department of Ed Nutrition Bureau. And they were really just, normally we have a three-year review cycle with them, and actually that review is a lot more in-depth than what we went through. But they're just making sure that we are running things, just noting how we are running things because all of the students were eating for free this year, and making sure that our claims were accurate, that we are putting through, and everything was captured accurately. And I, every year, any, anytime we go through any of these audits, Cafe Services is tremendous. We could not do this without them because there's so much paperwork, and you have to show menus and ingredients and, and just a lot of paperwork. This one wasn't as much, but they were still, they still had to show all their production records and things like that, so. And they were just great this year with just being flexible, you know, with serving meals in classrooms, and they, they just jumped right on board with whatever we're trying to do. And it's funny because we don't usually make money in our food service operations, but this year, not that we made money, but our participation was way up. I thank Cafe Services and Jack and his crew for just getting us through all that. So anyway, they, as you can see, they thought we did okay this year with everything going on. That's it.
Great, thank you, that's good. To the superintendent's report.
Okay, so the facilities committee did do their walkthrough this evening, and I can report on that on their committee, under committee reports. Also, the, I did include in your packet policy B E T H, I could not bring it up in my head for the last reading, so I've just put it, just for information for board members. Anytime anything comes up at a board meeting where I know there's, there was a policy that goes with it, I will always bring it up at the next meeting, just so that you'll have it in your, in your back pocket. I do have a nomination to present. Also, in your packet, you did receive a special education manual. And that was required, we just got a notice last month that we had to update our special admin. And if you approve it tonight, then I can send it off to the Department of Ed tomorrow morning. Again, the honor letter is there. In your policy meeting minutes, you did, Sharon included a cover letter to your policies that give you an explanation of what the policy committee process goes through. Let's see, the rest of it we can handle on the, the rest of the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Okay. Good evening. I just want to start, like always, just to throw out the thank you to our custodial staff. They've been hard-charging since school has been out. They've been very busy and working together as a team, and you can already see considerable notices in the buildings. Also, I'd like to thank our staff for just, again, you know, persevering and having a wonderful year as best we can, actually, despite circumstances, and congratulations on a well-deserved break for them. And, and yet, I say that, and we still have many, many teachers reaching out to do extra work for the summer, including Polyath, including stuff with a potentially new science program and also a new math program. So we do have teachers that are still going to be working in the summer, and yet they really need to take a break. We're moving forward with our search with a middle school special ed teacher, we're still looking. We don't have as many applicants as I would hope at this point, but we're still moving forward. And, you know, we have a lot to implement over the summer. Unless, I'm not necessarily going to speak for Trey, but I'm going to just mention, we have a lot of digital platforms coming up this summer that our teachers will be using, including the frontline PDA evaluation system. You're probably familiar with that, yeah. And then, we're also, you know, our student, our student information system, Alma, is just about up and running. So we're going to be really busy putting all those in place with, like, Billy, Sean, Quentin, myself, Trey, Jenny, just really getting those pieces together. So I'm excited about that, a lot to do, a lot to plan for our opening days of the next year. So with that, I, I think that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is committees. I think the facilities committee, CV?
Sure. Sure. Hi, guys. Yeah, we just finished our walkthrough, primarily just did up here by the elementary. Just wanted to say, kind of, it kind of echoes what you just said, is that, you know, I think the elementary school inside looks pretty good shape compared to past times. It looks really nice, you know, the paint in all the rooms looks good, the halls look good with the new flooring. Overall, the elementary school is pretty sharp on the inside, I think. And, and that kind of gets to the point of, you know, with the Esri funds, you know, the things we talked about inside of the elementary is targeting the carpet, which has the ability to be replaced under that thing and get rid of the carpet in the rest of the classrooms. That'll help with cleanliness. Also, we just peeked in the bathrooms and the tile, and it's one-by-square tile, and everybody knows about it, so it breaks. It's just, it's in rough shape, and it doesn't, it doesn't clean easy. Maybe they tie that in as another separate bid on that side, and maybe we get it as a solid floor floor. But I think with those two projects, as far as inside, and then once we finish the heating thing, I think the elementary school will be well brought up to, you know, today. You know, given the good overall updating. We did look outside a little bit. I asked Beta before we left if there's anything we needed to discuss. She said the fence at the playground. Ironically, we did. But one thought was, you know, I mean, maybe just put a bid out, find out, that could be cheap money if it's, if the poles are good, it's just, let's get new chain link and see what it's going to cost to rewrap it and tidy it up. That's, I think, really, I don't think it needs to be re-engineered to drilling new posts and stuff, it's just getting it restretched, you know, with some new chain link, and maybe we get it, look at that galvanized and like rubber coating. Other things we talked about that are kind of like long-term projects, that Mark's into, you, some are familiar with, some aren't, is, you know, one was pushing back the tree line, you know, five or 10 feet around the whole perimeter, and that kind of makes sense anyway, just, that's just in general, you do that because of encroachment on properties, just, you know, you do it wherever you are, you know, eventually the trees do start moving further and further in. You know, and that's what the electrical company's been doing up here for the last couple of years, is just kind of reclaiming some of that land. The crosswalk came up, you know, it was just, and that's always in the back of my mind, some kind of solution to come out with, how to get a dedicated path that lines up a little better. One thing we did mention was maybe in the woods where that intersection happens, that the kids head to the elementary school, is making that more of a defined path where it comes out of the woods actually in line with the elementary school thing, because that's kind of overgrown, but maybe it'd be wide in that. Because a lot of families, I noticed, do take that turn inside and, you know, come through that area, and maybe that just becomes a little more cleaned up too, so that a lot of people would utilize that as a secondary way.
Do you think that if you move where it comes out now in the middle of the parking lot? Then, yeah.
So lining up to that crosswalk is what we were talking about, but that's secondarily, because a lot of people come through that path, it's right outside the door.
Yeah, but I don't think a lot of them wouldn't if they weren't.
No, no, but that's not re-doing it, it's just making it more of an open, right now it's kind of the hobbit hole. You don't really see it when you leave the parking lot.
Right.
You know, but yeah, trying to straighten out that, the crosswalk issue. You know, I mean, the reality is, it takes, I think, about four staff members every day to monitor that hill.
Right.
So. We mentioned that, and then just in general, extra parking solutions, Mark mentioned at one point going further, if we continue driving in and further up. One of the suggestions I made, you know, maybe something to look at down the road is starting back here where we already, where the bus is, and we already are that deep in just connecting that to the other parking lot. That's not going so far into the woods, but it's creating three more of those little squares where the bus is. That is, holds three parking rows in essence, you know, so you gain a lot without going too much into the woods. You know, with, you know, just things to, for us to all look at. Mark's going to continue on the soffits, which he's tripped away for a few, past few years where they're rotted, you know, he takes some pieces down, wraps them in, I think vinyl and aluminum, and then puts them back up, just not white wood. Talked a little bit about barch malt, yeah, barch, birch, bark malt? Bark mulch for the playground, just neatening up the playgrounds and stuff, getting that back. He feels that the playground took a beating this year because of the lack of snow and a lot of kids outside. Definitely, he's got some divots. You know, and then there's other things that people bring up, we'll, we'll attack, but I think it's a good list to kind of focus on at this point. Put towards the grand plan that we look at every year. I think I kind of hit everything, you know, and him just digging for Esri fund stuff, and I think that's where the flooring can be really finished out with these rooms. If you guys get a chance to walk down, like, the paint looks nice, it's like bright colors, it's not just white walls like you see in a lot of schools. There's an accent wall everywhere, he's very fancy with his painting. There's a purple accent wall or a nice, like, I don't know, he was talking about the colors, ocean breeze. It does look good, and everything looks good down there, so. Good job. That's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Brian. And thank you, Mark, as well, for doing the walkthrough and keeping the place looking tidy. Policy committee, actually, fully policy, is, was there any other committees that Matt?
The other one was the strategic plan.
Yeah. All right, policies.
Well, the first reading, the minutes were in your packets, and then I'll kind of explain what we, suggestions and changes that we made, which again are all in red. Thank you very much. I don't think we've met since the last meeting, though, right? No, but these are the ones we went up over that. Didn't we go with them last week?
No, because we, no, because we hadn't had it. There's only you guys that see that.
They just got them, they just got them, so. And then there's the J I C J R for second reading, typically for approval. And do you, when we go over them all, do you just want to vote on, what do you?
Unless, unless there's additional discussion that anyone had for any of the individual policies, we did have a nice breakdown, that was nice.
I'm comfortable with going forward with.
Yeah, I, I think that unless there's some specific comments, then we can just vote on the, to moving them to second reading.
Okay.
I think we'll have to do a second vote for the approval of the, the J I C R.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the J I C J dash R responsible use of electronic devices. One second, just a second.
Just trying to find that. One second.
Go ahead, pass that down to him. Oh, you found it?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. And I guess, well, I'll accept the motion from Tammy, is there a second on that before we start discussing? Thank you, Jasmine. So I would just let, start the discussion by just clarifying, you know, the, the issue all along is that some of the, some of the stuff that we were doing with, or some of the rules that were being implemented with regards to the use of electronic devices were, were difficult to enforce, and we're all comfortable now, administration, that, that what we have here is something that is appropriate, reasonable, and enforceable.
I think it's.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about that? Okay. All those in favor of approving J S, J I C J dash R, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous, so that motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to move to second reading. Policies, D F A, E F dash R, G B G A, G D B dash R, J I C A dash R, J L C A, J L C B, J L C C, J L C F dash R, and J L C G. One second.
Thank you, Tammy. Jasmine.
And then, any feedback at all on that?
Nothing. Okay.
Thank you.
That was all.
Perfect.
Any further discussion on that issue? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. So we'll move all those to second reading for next meeting. And was there anything else with policy?
Oh, yes. Jasmine can't be chair. Does anybody else want to be chair?
We're looking at you, Ashley.
That's fine. Tammy will take it. I'll do it, I just wanted to give you the opportunity, but if you don't, that's fine.
I thought we already voted in the room last night.
Don't call on me for it.
She wasn't here. Okay. It's fine, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, next up, business requiring board action, staff nominations, recommendations, resignations.
I do have a nomination for Robert Soccher. Now, Robert, he is going to be taking on a guided study hall for one-year position. And it's for student support teacher from grade, for grades K through eight, and it's based on the learning loss, and it's under the Esri funds. There's a percentage of monies from the Esri funds that has to go towards learning loss. So that is one of them. I remember Robert was the one who came in and worked part-time with the students who were remote, so he tracked them. So he did an excellent job, so. That's what we're, we're proposing him to continue, this will be a full-time position.
And this, sorry.
I was, I was just going to add that, that we couldn't really come up with a clever name, but it, it's kind of a misnomer as far as, as far as the guided study hall. He will have opportunities to work with kids as a pullout if need be, but we're really hoping for him to be in the classroom with targeted people. Kids that we know that are struggling from, like, you know, what I would call a cusp kid, and I'll talk about that later. But, you know, those kids to be able to actually go into the classroom with them, or at times during, like, a study hall type, type piece, yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's my, that's my nomination.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to accept the nomination of Robert Soccher for the grant-funded student support position.
So moved. One second.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Jasmine. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Any other resignation, or sorry, recommendations or nominations?
I don't think so.
No, I'm sorry.
Judy, did you happen to hear back from the lawyer about the, about Maple? Does that need board action?
Yep.
Not, not right now?
Okay.
Yeah. So the next up is the approval of the special education manual. So this is what we discussed, what you had discussed earlier.
Right, what I just brought up earlier.
And it does require board approval, okay. I'd accept the motion to approve the revised special education policies and procedures plan.
So moved.
Thank you, Tammy.
One second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And audit engagement letter. What kind of action do we need?
So that's a new board packet, and we just need a motion to move forward with the, for the fiscal year 2021 audit with our, with with Anderson, who's our current auditors, and it has to be signed by the superintendent and the board.
Okay.
So that's why you.
Just the chair, though, right?
Yeah, just, yeah.
So we do a board, a motion for approval by the entire board, and then I can sign? Okay. And was it just two board members, or?
One, just one.
One, okay.
And then.
Do you have a copy that we can do that this evening, or?
Yeah, we have the original, and you have the copy in your pack.
Right, I, yeah.
Yeah, we, we brought the original.
Okay, I'd accept the motion to approve the engagement letter for Plausnik and Sanderson for the school's audit.
So moved.
Thank you, Tammy.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. And, oh, this reminded me of the, that's. Next up is new business, middle, high school schedules.
Yeah. I have some copies for him, but before I hand him out and we start looking at them while I'm trying to draw them, I just want to preface some of this.
Teacher 101.
I just want to preface some of this with some of the conversations we've been having as faculty during staff meetings as far as, and, and that, and listening to our public as well. And, and what do we need, what are our needs for school, and you, you've heard me say this before, time in class. We, we need, we love more time to spend with kids as far as, like, forty, more than 45 minutes a day or a period, because we just feel like that gets a real rushed atmosphere, and I call it, like, drive-through education. Our, our goal, after we talked about it during staff meetings and faculty meetings, is that, you know, how can we get more time on task with the students, and what will we do with that time? And, you know, we're taking that really serious as what we could do for our students, and what do we need to do in order to get our kids to become better learners and, and more engaged learners? And in order to become that engaged learner, there's three factors that you really need to know of. And what builds student success? The first one is relationship with their teacher. So the, the relationship that a person has with their teacher, student has with their teacher is so key to any kind of academic success, social, emotional success, engagement success. So I feel like we have a cadre of people that, that do get close to kids that way, and they can have those personal relationships to help them succeed. So, so we're there, right? So the second thing that we need to know of is that, again, I talked about that opportunity for intervention. Those kids who are cusp kids, those kids who are right on the border from being like a, a two to a three, or a three to a four, and I use that score, the 1-2-3-4 rubric, because that's what they use on SAS. And a lot of competencies are based on, you know, the grade you have is a 1, 2, 3, or 4. So how do we push those kids and give them extra services? And, and the last thing, believe it or not, which I always find is odd, as far as how students become, become successful, is actually just presence of administration. So is, if the administration out in the hallway, are they talking to the kids, are they walking in the classroom? Is the superintendent coming in the hallways? Are, you know, kids in this, this building seeing me walking around, bringing Ginny into our building, walking around? Is the superintendent coming in the hallways? Are, you know, kids in this, this building see me walking around bringing Ginny into our building, walking around? So the presence of administration really helps with behavior, socially, emotional awareness and academics. So we really kind of want to focus on those things when we look at our schedule. And what we'll do is we'll look at the middle school schedule first. I'll give you a minute to peruse that and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about it. And then we'll talk about how that affects the, the high school schedule and maybe some of our specials and so forth. So I will. Stapler was really kind of not working nicely. So if it, you know, staff you, I really didn't mean to. Here, pass those down. So some of you will get a one-sided sheet. It's the same thing. But the front is the middle school schedule. And I'll let you look at that a little bit. And I'll give you a minute or so and then I'll, I'll talk about it and you can ask some questions and we'll talk about the high school schedule, which is on the back. So I know you can read all this, but I just, again, what do we want to do? The goal is to free up more time for classroom instruction, more time with teachers and parent professionals, more time for direct instruction and using that RTI framework. And to give middle school a sixty-minute opportunity versus forty-five-minute opportunity. It may not seem like a lot, but when you look at switching classes and going to forty-five minutes and so forth, you know, now we're packing up, we're unpacking, we're going to the bathroom. And now we're down to forty-two minutes, maybe. So looking at giving that little extra piece is going to be helpful. I'll give you a moment to absorb the middle school. Looking at the timeframe. You'll notice they meet homeroom regular time. They'll go to specials, which is typical. Specials are typically done first period of the day. And in previous years, they actually had two periods of specials. And teachers use that second period as a planning period. I looked at it as a little bit as not being very equitable to other teachers. They also use some of that. This year, because of COVID, they use some of that as their lunchtime. Cause they were doing an extended amount of recess outside, covering those duties. And then they also use that as a team time, which is nice. But again, you're looking at two periods of prep. And, and what can we do to go ahead and, and get more time into the classroom when we do that two periods of prep? We ended up taking one of those away. When you look at period one, two, three, four, they're all an hour long. Lunch has been limited to twenty-five minutes rather than a half hour. And the big piece right there is what we're looking at is that flex period. The flex period is what we would call DEER, which is drop everything and read. It's a, it's a program that, you know, when you look at silent sustained reading, it's supposed to show the benefits of, you know, just think about what you can do during that time and the benefits of being able to read. It does not have to be a half hour. You can be fifteen, twenty minutes as long as we're concentrated on that. And all those will not happen every day. There's a broken down schedule for that. Advisory, recess, and lessons are also during that time. So I'll, I'll cover more of that in a moment. But what we wanted to do is what we looked at is that flex opportunity to give teachers an opportunity to say, let's say I'm a math teacher and I need these students for fifteen minutes. I can automatically sign them up at that time. Look at enrichments. We look at after we sustain some, some model that, that's cohesive for everybody. You look at one teacher saying, maybe I don't need somebody this day. And I'll open up that to enrichment opportunities, whether it's, whether it's, it's board games, social activities, whether it's maybe bringing in a foreign language to, to talk with those kids on a daily basis. It depends. That's going to be really free for them to be able to figure that out. And I wish I had a copy of theirs, what they have now, but I don't. And I don't, and I'm sorry, I'm not able to delineate that minute by minute, day by day. But the idea was to give teachers more opportunities to be flexible in their, in their RTI models. And to give kids an opportunity to do those advisories that are really important. Right now, if I remember correctly, advisory is going to be the first twenty minutes of that every day for everybody. Recession is the last ten minutes. And so that in-between phase will be the RTI models. Students will be going to chorus and band during that time as well. What you'll notice then is when we go down to the consolidated arts into the classroom, typically kids don't see all of these classes. They get bits and pieces as they move along from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So you'll see like an art, they don't typically get art in seventh grade. However, with this rotation, we're able to give sixth, seventh, and eighth grade art class. Same thing with music or guitar. Health is something that was, that we brought in. Well, we've been doing that. So same thing. But typically, health is going to be a seventh and eighth grade only. But we've kind of made a commitment and rearranged our health opportunities to go K through eight. Everybody gets a health and wellness type piece. And then also tenth grade for their credit, for their credit. I'll go more in the world languages because I, I imagine there's going to be some questions about that. Again, your I T C typically only sees six through eight. P E sees everybody. And then building and trades, which would I would call Mr. Good Boo, his class. We typically call that shoppers. I don't even know what they call it. But, but I, I think it'd be better, small engines, correct? But it's not just small engine. It's welding, it's woodworking, it's small engines. You know, it's, it's repairs. So I want to kind of transfer that name into like a building and trade type name. So that's what I'm going to be referring to it as. Couple of interesting aspects. I know world languages have often been opportunities for seventh and eighth graders. When you look at RSA three oh six point four eight for middle school, it says it may be offered. It does not say it has to be offered. Which is kind of interesting because P E as well. We do P E K through twelve if we want. We, we don't have to offer P E to, to kindergarten. But we do, which is okay. The reason world languages was pulled from that cycle is because, remember, we've been looking at teachers getting dual certification. And right now, our teacher who does French or, and middle school world languages is also working for us for the T-Sol teacher. That's the teacher of foreign languages. Sorry. English is a second language. And we already have three new students this year that are going to be requiring some pretty intensive services. Two people are coming from China and they will be needing those extra services. Right now, I'm still working with Annie to figure out maybe what would we could do as far as bringing those kids into an enrichment piece during, during that flex time that I talked to you about. So it's, it's not a done deal, but right now, this is the most solid schedule we have for the middle school. The, there is some room for some flexibility based on, based on what our needs are for the ESOL teacher. So that's the middle school.
Do any of our special education teachers have ESOL certifications? Most with masters do. So the middle school kids aren't going to have the opportunity for any French, Spanish.
World languages? Not at this, not with this.
Unless they do it during flex time, but that totally cuts out all of the band and chorus.
Not, not necessarily. Remember, there's twenty minutes ahead of that and ahead of when band is supposed to be in chorus. And there's also another ten minutes afterwards. I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but twenty minutes. We could do some enrichment stuff in twenty minutes if that's what we, if we tail with the schedule a little bit. Correct?
I have a quick question on the flex time too.
Yes.
All kids are required to do something during that time. No kids will be able to do like study hall. They all have to sign up to do something.
Yes, everybody would be, yes, there, there is a schedule for that. I just, I failed to bring it with.
No, that's fine.
But yes, yes, there is.
So nobody's going to get lost through the cracks basically.
I would hope not. That's not the point. The point is, and we've had massive discussions about this, is like, what can we do with that RTI time? What can we do with that? How is that going to work? The teachers seem to be really on board with that idea of, you know, initially, what we do is we sign kids up to where we need them to be. And then let's, let's teach them some ownership through our advisory and say, where do you really need to be? I'm glad you mentioned that because to go along with that, remember I told you this is going to be a summer of a lot of technology and meditation? Well, our, what we do is we, we contract with. I'm going to go over and start playing a game. We can cut that off. You might be familiar with that program, but it's, it's not. There's a pretty popular version of that. It's something else, but it's not the same thing. But securely was able to put that into the package we have for cheaper and do the same stuff. And it, it basically, let's say I set up my classroom and I know everybody needs to be on IXL for those fifteen minutes. I can block off everybody's computer and say, the only thing you have access to is IXL. That's it. And then after that timeframe, if they need to go do research somewhere else, I can set up webpages that way. I can monitor them from, from my screen if need be. So what that kind of brought me to is like the idea of everybody should be doing something at that time. And yes, everybody will be doing something.
Do you guys use Power School?
We do not. That we are using Alma. And that's going to be the implement. That's one of the other implementations.
Right. Does it have like a scheduler?
I believe they have that function. Yes, where we can have kids sign up.
Yeah, that's what we do with Power School.
Okay, thank you.
And then teachers can go in and request students and it blocks them out of stuff. And you can also set up where if their grades are below a certain thing, they can't do enrichment opportunities. Like they have to go to their other classes.
I'll have to check into that part.
Yeah, that was something we found like on accident. So I don't know what you have to do. But yeah, the programs are pretty nice to that.
Any other questions for middle school?
Let me just say that it sounds like this, the, the world languages is a combination of some time and staffing.
Yeah.
But I share Tammy's concern about the middle school not having that opportunity.
I do as well.
I wonder, I wonder if that's something that we can work on fixing. You know, I, I think that getting the kids started as early as possible and, you know, the world languages is, is important. So I don't know if that's something that, that you can work on, if that's something that's sort of currently written off. I mean, I just.
It's, it's not necessarily written off, but it would entail like blowing up a lot of this.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would definitely blow this up.
I think in the very least, we would need to reach out to middle school parents and students to gauge their view of removing that opportunity. Was it previously a requirement that every middle school student have to take it in because of foreign language?
What they did is they put it up, they offered it. Remember I said in, in RSA?
Right, right, right.
You said you may do it, but what they did is they offered it French to seventh graders to give them a taste of it and to see what they're like. And then eighth graders get a chance to do Spanish.
So I wonder how many incoming eighth graders have been looking forward to taking Spanish and now they're not going to be able to. So previously it was just seventh and eighth, not sixth.
Correct.
Do they still bring Spanish to the fifth graders? They used to do that once a week.
Well, that's the other part with leaving it the way it's at, you know, depending upon that course load for ESOL students. You know, looking at, looking at Annie being able to bring, like, that's what we're talking about, those enrichment opportunities. Or even, even just like a drop-in opportunity to kids. You know, in the elementary school, that could be a possibility as well.
I mean, you have allocated time for art, music and guitar and health. If I'm not interested in music and guitar, but I'm interested in travel, there's enough interest. Like though that, there's, there's time available for those people for if there's enough. And if it's one student, I think it's a hard sell. Five or six kids that, that this is what they want during that period of time. It'd be nice if there could be some kind of shift.
Right.
Cause there is opportunity for somebody to play music, which I would never do.
There could be, if you look at the high school schedule.
But I do like speaking Spanish.
But I think that that's a good point, that maybe there's just a way to look back at it again and try to be creative with ways that it could be an opportunity.
I know, I know it's gonna, like you said, like this is kind of, you built this. But at the same time, I mean, if you had enough kids. I mean, digital abolishing and, and building and trades gets a priority. Which I'm not, not in either of those, you know.
But not for everybody.
They're great things, but they're not for everybody, you know?
Typically. Oh, sorry.
You, we, like you said a few minutes ago, we have two international students coming in from China. Which granted, you can't teach Chinese, it's a very difficult language. But more and more of that's going to happen. Like, we're going to get more and more. Not so much French, and I'm not knocking on French. But Spanish and Hispanic speaking is just, it's a part of culture now. You know, I mean, kids have, that have grown up watching TV since they were like two years old, speak some Spanish because their cartoons are in Spanish.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, I think it's, it's relatively important in, in that respect, especially since we're giving time to other stuff. But I also agree that if it's, if you only got interest of three students, is there a way to do that too? You know, as a separate type of thing where it's not a dedicated class, but there's Tuesdays and Wednesdays or Tuesdays and Thursdays. Those three students get to sit down and, and get a little bit of learn.
I actually have some thoughts running through my head too, as far as looking at that as a schedule. I got an idea. I just gotta, I'm not going to say it right now. But I think they're, based on what you guys have been talking about, if you have X amount of students that, that want to do that, I think we have a way of looking at that. And one of the reasons why we took out the foreign languages because it's not, it's not.
Is it just a time thing or is it also a staff thing?
Probably a little bit of both, but.
Cause if you have the ESL O students who need this person, you can't just be like, okay, your person disappears for an hour a day.
Right.
You know, like that's not equitable for them either. So you have to.
I can definitely go back and look at it. We can go back and look at it. I have some questions and I have some thoughts. But that part I can look at.
And kind of just clarify the way that, the way that that whole thing works, it's, it would be in the specials period. And basically, you would have a, a class that would have art during that period for six weeks. And then in the next six weeks, they would have music. And then the next six weeks, but you'd have it every day for six weeks.
Correct.
And we're just, we're basically just not, we're just not having them do that world languages and that sort of rotation of, of specials.
Correct. And the, well, the reason why is when we look at the middle school too, there's six sections. I mean, we could probably look at ours, we could say, well, what happens if we combine a section? And then rotate through that as well. That was one of the things I was just thinking about. But we're looking at some. But we're looking at some larger classes than what they're used to. Not, not absurdly large, but yeah.
Okay. And I'm just trying to think of the, it complicates it when, when it's structured in that manner, it complicates just having people elect to do that. Because it doesn't really, I mean, it's, it's an entire section doing six weeks of one thing and then they move on and another section.
Typically how we do it though. That's what they've been doing for years.
So that would certainly complicate the idea of an elective type class. But again, I'm just encourage creativity to try to find a way for students to have that opportunity.
All right. Thank you. Looking at the high school, again, what we're looking at doing is adding minutes and adding opportunities for extended periods to learn, to give that RTI model. And so what we did is we did this modified schedule, which is actually what they're running, very similar to what they're running a few years back. Which seemed to be something that students were able to comprehend and put out their best efforts for. The class time actually was able to change, if you look in the left-hand column, to 51 minutes daily versus versus the 43, 45 minutes that happening now. And then looking at that 90-minute time period. Pardon me. There was some question as to whether or not, as to whether or not we could do it on different days. But if we look at like taking that block period on, on a Wednesday, for, for instance. We know we have a lot of people that leave on Wednesday based on skiing over the, over the summer or the winter. And so it would be easier to keep those, those 90-minute periods on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That way, what we can do is we can use those opportunities for kids who maybe miss a portion of the Tuesday schedule. We can get them caught up on those longer block, longer time periods, those 90-minute time periods. If you look at when advisory takes place, there's, on Thursdays, it's that 90-minute piece. And again, that's going to be more of a flex time. We're looking at a traditional advisory where kids are mixed nine through 12. That was really important to our students. They wanted it to be that way and so did our teachers. So we moved on there. We're looking at opportunities at that time to do wellness activities, which we have a very, very dedicated crew of wellness committee that, that like to participate in that. We can do some social emotional learning. We could do some clubs at that time, class meetings and assemblies. We can also look at, like Mr. Quinn and myself pulling the high school at that time to possibly do some work towards a strategic plan stuff that we have in place, the, the image of a graduate and really talk to them about that, bringing guest speakers, bringing public speakers to talk to them about these opportunities and then, and then that would allow us to give teachers an, an extra 45 minutes every fourth week or so. That one's not finalized. I just threw that out there. Every fourth week or something like that to, to be able to work together as a team to discuss data, to discuss vertical alignment, things like that. So that's kind of how this works. And again, it's, it's something that they've run in the past. And, and I feel like this adds time to the classroom. So that's kind of all I got for the high school and it's pretty straight and narrow. Questions?
Is this similar to what we've been doing?
Yeah, like I said, a few years ago, you ran this for a couple of years, I believe it was. It's very similar. Yes.
Right, I guess.
Yep. One thing you do need to know about those 90 minutes, those, we have been having a lot of conversations again with staff meetings as to how to structure those. We've, we've had articles that we read. We've had group work discussing what works best for what situation. So whether you're in a chorus class or you're in a science class, is, is, are you, what does lab look like at that time? What is, what is like a reader's workshop or writer's workshop look like at that time in, in a high school class for 90 minutes? Just giving them, you know, we expect structure during that time and we expect opportunities for that response to intervention at that time. That's kind of the training and stuff that we've been doing right now with staff meetings.
Thank you. You guys have done a lot of work on this. Not an easy task. It's definitely a nightmare. It sounds like a lot of thought and research is done into it too.
Was there any further discussion on the, on that agenda? Continuing business. Tyler Lincoln and Denise Hardey.
Yeah, that continues to be ongoing between the two attorneys.
So no updates ever?
Yeah.
I will address the, the next item. I think I have sufficiently addressed the delinquency in the superintendent evaluations. I hope to have.
I like having that.
To, no, 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 no. So we'll, we'll hopefully be able to have that soon.
Set the alarm.
I did. Wow, 3pm. It's in my house.
Next up is COVID-19. Is there any?
On the plan? No, just to let you know that the plan was submitted to Department of Defense last Monday. Great.
Great. Strategic plan. I know there was a meeting this week.
Yesterday. Three-hour meeting.
Thanks.
It was, it was interesting. It was very different from what I had expected it to be. Yeah. He goes all over thinking.
Well, I had attended, so we started the process last year and I had attended those meetings. So I was pretty familiar with the process. And I'm also familiar with kind of the format of the process and the goal, just based on work I've done in my field. There's a lot, there's a lot of crossover in different, different areas. And it's a real, and I do think that it's not what some people expected, what the outcome goal is. I think that some, so we, we have a great turnout. We have community members. We have a great turnout of folks. We have teachers, we have board members. Atmen.
Because they are on the first week of vacation, but there are some that will be coming. So. Give at least a week.
And I think that some folks might have had a different idea of what the ultimate outcome is going to be, that perhaps we were going to be looking at specific curriculum and we're going to be looking at different things when that's not the goal. So it might behoove us to have him explain again at the beginning of the next session, what the ultimate goal is, what we're there to work on and discuss and create. And it's, it's a, it's a great opportunity for, for the school and a great process, I think, for the school and the, the folks that are a private to go, to go through. So it's, it remains an exciting thing for me. It's an exciting thing for, for our district. We, we have our next two meetings scheduled. We're trying to be done with the plan by August. So we have our next two meeting schedules and our main.
The next meeting, July 1st from 4 to 7 and then July 15th from 4 to 7. So.
And then our, and our main goal over the next couple is to really reach out to the community and get, get a lot of feedback and just to, to kind of like educate and, and, and give them the information, this is what we're doing. This is what, you know, we, we want the support. We want people. And, and if people don't want to support, we really just want folks to know. So to provide the info to the community. So yeah, that's that.
Thank you guys.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a long time coming, this process and we were rudely interrupted by pandemic in the midst of our original attempt at this. So.
Mark does an excellent job.
He does.
He's a facilitator.
He's great.
Yeah, he is.
I think even though we got interrupted, it seems like there's more people that were interested because we were, that was something we had a pretty big struggle with a year and a half, two years ago.
Right.
Was getting anybody outside of this building to do any, to join.
We have locked away for you. Everybody wants to.
We didn't have a big turnout in the beginning. We had like a ton of people on the committee in the beginning, but maybe they were all from, from the school. But we definitely do, we have, we have a lot of community members. So that's great.
And I think that's the objective, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Esther Funds, I know we've heard a little bit about that. Is there any additional?
Well, we just continue because, so the first part, the reopening plan, we had to get that to the DOE within 30 days. So within 90 days, we have to give them a somewhat of a plan of how we think we're going to use the funds. So like Julie said, learning loss is a percentage. Say 20% of the funds have to go towards learning loss with the position that she talked about tonight, you know, it might be like after-school programs. We're looking at some science materials and programs. So things like that. And then I really appreciate the facilities walking through because I think that, as I said, the last. You know, I think next year at this time, we had this discussion the other day at a meeting I was at, next year at this time, most of those schools are going to be competing for. I thought I said you last time, but it's like 2023 and 2024. So we have time. We'll get that. Yeah, yeah.
Great.
So anyway, continuing it again, appreciate the walkthrough and any ideas. Kind of, we're supposed to be engaging people to get ideas and we've given you, there's like 15 areas we've spent the money on.
So I know that some community members raised the, raised the issue of some summer, additional summer enrichment, including like a summer reading program, things of that nature. That may be qualified for the catch-up learning portion of that. Something to consider either for this summer or next summer. That may be an opportunity to use some of those funds. Anything else on that?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. And Advisory Budget Committee? So that's an issue that we sort of put off. We have as many budget, as many board members as we currently have are here tonight. So it may, may warrant a discussion this evening on that issue. Tammy, you were the one that asked me to have that put on the agenda. So I guess if you want to address that. You've got to be the junior first.
I honestly wasn't prepared to do that because I figured we'd appoint somebody first, but I'm okay. I'm doing it. It's science.
Fill in the note person. I'm sorry. Fill in the new person.
Fill in the new person. Well, I mean, you were here for the district meeting and you all that when they, the district voted to absolve, diminish the elected budget committee. And it was a close vote. It was very close. There are, you get the two different budget committees, town or school. You can have an appointed budget committee, which is advisory. Maybe they go over everything, they crunch some numbers and then they come to the school board and say, we looked at this and we think this might be a great idea. They need more money here, maybe. Or what do you think about cutting a little here or whatever? However, it goes, they advise us and we make the final decision. It's another set of checks and balances versus the elected budget committee. It's their budget. They do what they want to the budget, however they want to do it, and that budget goes to the voters. Which is what happened this past budget year and I think the year before, correct? And the school board made a, or a, a community member, I think it might have been a school board. A member of the school board made the motion to amend the budget back to where the school board recommended. It would, having an advisory budget committee would eliminate the need for that or the possibility of having to do that versus having an elected budget committee. And I believe it would address, it was not an overwhelming majority that voted to get rid of the budget committee. It was very, within seven votes. It was close. So I, I, I believe it would be a benefit to the school, to the school board, to the community to have an advisory budget committee. We still have a budget committee. We will appoint them. They will look over the budget, but it's not going to be the can't say shit show here, can I? But it could be particularly at a, at, at district meeting. I, I, I believe it will eliminate all that and yet still be a benefit to the community. I do. Go ahead.
Is that an appointed then? Or how would that, how does that build?
You get letters of interest and we.
Same thing we're doing right now to get our new board member. We'd have people enter letters of interest. You'd sit.
Yeah.
Build a, a team. And is that something that needs like the attorney involved in for the, how they do stuff or what, how would they advise to?
Make a motion. I don't know. It's, they, it's very clear on RSA is what they're allowed to have, what they, what they get access to.
So you're the same stuff that the, the board, the budget committee had access to.
Yes.
However, they, they can only use it for reviewing purposes and suggestions.
Correct. Correct.
And then they give, we give them the same as before. They would have a, a, a week to present their information at the end of the session prior to coming up with our budget.
And that's the, that's the key there. It's not, the, the, an elected budget committee sets their own schedule. They set their own meetings. They set their own everything. Depended on when the budget is ready. And there are RSAs that also dictate when that has to be ready, when it's, when you have to get it to the school board. When the school board has to approve it to get it to the budget committee, when it has to be ready for the budget law. Right.
Advisory committee.
Exactly. The advisory committee is.
We set a time because that's what, even though there was dedicated times this past year, we saw that, that did not work.
An advisory budget committee works for us.
We spent multiple times on Zoom discussing the same things and not getting answers because it, it, there was no preparation. So we put a deadline. They have a deadline. They present their case. And we have discussion and we say, well, what do you think about this?
We can designate the number too. It doesn't have to be seven. We can make it five or whatever.
And that's governed by municipal budget law, that I believe is it.
I don't think that we should, to be frank. I, I think that a lot of the concern in the community, well, yeah. I mean, I won't use the same language that, that Tammy used, but I, I agree that this budget session was, was difficult. I think it was, it was difficult for the board, this board. It was difficult for the, the budget committee. It was stressful and upsetting for a lot of members of the community. I think that the turnout at the meetings, you know, I like to see the public interest in what we do at the school as much as anybody else. But I don't think that that was productive public input. I think it, it really caused a lot of anxiety for folks that have kids in the school and are concerned about what we were going to be able to offer them because of what, because of the way that the budget got approached this year. And I think that the reaction to that was, was pretty strong. I think that although it was not a large majority of people that voted to to get rid of the budget committee, because I think it's, a lot of people liked, still appreciated and understood that that potentially could be a beneficial process, but it certainly didn't think that it was this year. But I think one of the major concerns that a lot of people raised during these meetings was that the, that a lot of the members of the board, of the budget committee, sorry, were not, were not elected, were not accountable to the citizens because they were not elected. They were. They were appointed, there was only a handful of folks that were actually elected. And then, and, you know, were sort of turning around after they've rejected the idea of the budget committee, uh, through the district vote and saying, we're going to set up another unelected group of people that are going to have say-so over, over the budget. I, I think there's a, there's sort of accountability through, uh, the political process of, of electing this board. I think that we are capable of doing the job. It, it may be some additional work on our part, um, that we, you know, that we originally relied on the budget committee to do for us. But, but I'm willing to take that on as a member of the board. I, I think that we're capable of it. I think that we can do the job, uh, and we can do it well for the citizens of the community. And I think that we can do it in a way that doesn't cause the type of anxiety and, and, um, disruption in the community and the school district that, that we saw this year. And, you know, i- in the past, we've had budgets that we come to the, to the voters with the, with the, the same budget. We've had, um, you know, budgets where it's, it's very close. Um, but, you know, every once in a while, the, for some reason or another, we get, we get these wild swings and the budget recommendations from the budget committee. And it really is, uh, I think toxic to the community because particularly in the situation where we're not getting a full seven-member elected or six-member with a board member, uh, elected budget committee, that's, that's accountable to the, to the community. So I would, I, I don't think we, we need an advisory budget committee. I don't think that we, the community would benefit from, uh, having just another group of people that are unaccountable to the, to the community, taking on that role. And then, and again, I, I, I think a lot of the objection was to the fact that, that it was appointed, that some of these people were appointed and we're just basically doing that again. And it, and even though it would just be advisory and it wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be necessarily voting on their budget and we, as a board, we'll be able to reject or accept whatever recommendations they make. Um, I, I just think that we can do that job as a board as well as any other, uh, committee. And I, and I also think, and I think we've already heard, some community members express, you know, sort of the, the opinion, oh, well, you know, what's the point if the board's just going to appoint all the people that agree with them, you know, to, uh, to, to staff this committee? And so what's the point of this additional committee? So i- in, you know, that's a, you know, I, I think a, a fair criticism of that, of that type of process. So, you know, we're elected to make the decisions on behalf, and, and set the policy on behalf of the school. I think that we can, um, uh, tackle the, the issue of the budget and we, we do it in typically anyway. And, and, but it may require a little bit extra work, but I think we can, we can make that happen. We can serve the community the best to do it.
And I'll just add to that saying that last, this, this past, um, budget season was not a one-off. This has been my experience on the board in the past four years. Um, so it's not as though we had a disruptive season and all of a sudden we're making this rash decision to cut the committee. Um, it's, it certainly has been an ongoing experience, um, in the past four years that I've been on it. It's, it was the most disruptive, um, but it's, it's, uh, it's been a pattern. Um, it's been an issue. Um, and, you know, I think that perhaps, I don't recall what the vote was, how vote the post was, but I think that, um, showing the community that, that we are taking responsibility for this decision. This decision was made, this decision was voted on and, um, you know, standing by the.
That said, the budget committee to me was a, still probably gives me nightmares. But the people that actually elected all of us. Feel bad that half of our voters wanted it, half didn't. So how do you just say, no, we're going with this half? We don't care about this other half of the people that elected us.
And that, that is tough, I hear that, but I don't think it's saying we don't care about this other half. And, and at the end of the day, we have to make a decision.
I guess that I'll support it your way.
Yeah.
And I think it's vastly different, the two boards. One that has the ultimate say over everything and we don't have a choice. And another one that's just doing some checks and balances and bringing us some suggestions, some recommendations. I think it's a huge difference. And comparing this last budget committee to an appointed advisory committee in the future is apples and oranges.
I also think it's something that we need to do, that I don't think it's beneficial for us to vote on it this early. I think that we had a, uh, an experience over the past several months and that we need time to sit on that and do, do, I would personally like to do more research, um, on what other districts do. I, I don't feel comfortable making a decision on it right now, to be honest.
Do you mean you want to keep it on? On-going business for discussion in the future?
Honestly, seeing it on the agenda gives me anxiety, but I, I don't want to vote. Um, and, and I think that we're, we're electing a new school board member, so I, I think that, that we should take that into consideration as well.
Let me have the budget out to the school board at 1:40. November, beginning of November.
Budget process a month into.
Beginning of November, correct?
Yeah.
I know you do that, yeah. So September, when we're back in school and rolling, have a little discussion. I make a motion, we put a discussion on the advisory budget committee on either of the September, with me twice in September, school board meetings agenda.
Sir. I think worst case scenario, you say no then.
Motion, right.
Motion by Tammy, second by Joe. Uh, any further discussion on table, on this, tableing this issue until September? Frankly, I, I'd like to address it as soon as possible. I'd prefer to address it now and, and honestly, I would hope that the board would support proceeding without one, but, uh, so I, you know, that's my opinion on, on the current motion on the table.
So make the motion.
No, no, Tammy's made a motion. I'm, I'm, I, I would just ask, you know, I, I, I'm in favor of a vote of nay on tabling this discussion. I think we should resolve this issue this evening, but, um, so.
Jasmine was uncomfortable making this decision.
And that's fine.
Giving Jasmine time, she has anxiety.
And she can vote, uh, aye on your motion. That is her choice. Um, if there's not any further discussion on the motion to table, uh, then we will take a vote. Okay, all those in favor of tabling this discussion until September? All those opposed? Nay, nay. And eyes carry, and so we will table this discussion until September. I don't see any students. Do we have faculty participation this evening? No? And I do not see any members of the community either. Mark? Are you here as a community member to address the issues or is it?
Before we move on, may I? For public input specifically at that meeting. Legally, no. We can't limit people, we can't tell people to stop talking when it's a public hearing. Not when it's just, we, we're asking for public input. So in a legal stance, yeah, we can tell her to sit down, but we asked for the public input. And then you say, okay, we want to hear what you have to say, we want your input, we really want to know what you're thinking, but doing three minutes and then sit down was just wrong to me. And that's why I made that comment, um, at the last school board meeting, when a member of the public was speaking, on specifically what we asked them for input for. And we asked them for input, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, on that reopening plan, we had to get public input, correct? It was one of the criteria on that we had to get public input. So technically you could have called it a hearing, because we needed the public input to make the plan. So I just want to, I, I felt like I got reprimanded with this whole thing and not, I mean, that I don't need reprimanding occasionally, because I have a good idea. However, in this instance, I believe I was right and we shouldn't have limited anybody's speech on something where we asked for their input and where we needed their input. Yeah.
Well, I'll apologize if you felt like I reprimanded you. I, I, that was certainly not my intention. I, I think that we, we have a policy for public participation, we should be following it. That was, it's as simple as that. Uh, and, you know, we're going to have situations where, um, we have, uh, public, that a lot of members of the public that want to, that want to have a, uh, an opportunity to speak on, on certain issues. Uh, you know, and if, if we're routinely making exceptions to the, to the.
Say, okay, now stop. It's not right. If it was a regular board meeting, we weren't asking for public input and discussion, fine. I, this is a good policy, it's a great policy and adhere to it. However, when we're asking people to speak, come to this meeting and tell us how you feel. Okay, now shut up. It's just not.
I think that's pretty consistent with what we do across the board though, particularly with budget hearings and everything. Robert comes and he forces time limits.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, budget hearings and public, legal public hearings, you can't limit this, they have to.
Well, we have, we have, we have Robert there keeping time and cutting people off. I mean, this is something that we do regularly, so.
Right. But.
Dennis?
Thank you.
Okay, I think we need to go into non-public, uh, at this point to discuss matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of the person other than a member of the school board. I do believe we are going to be having a vote after we come out of that public session. But for now, poll the board to.
I have a question first. How are we addressing that with the folks online? Will they log back in? Are we putting them in a separate room like we did last time? We just ended the meeting, so the folks online won't know what the vote is at the outcome? I mean, not that we have to be curious. I mean, we don't have to allow that. Oh, you didn't vote thus?
Yeah, we had nothing to come out. We voted, we were just having discussions. Being a vote.
No, it isn't minutes? No, it's the minutes, yeah. I, I don't know. Bye, Mark.
There's just too much excitement.
Thank you, Mark.
Way to just announce the vote on the, like, webpage immediately, like as a thing?
Well, I, I'm assuming what we're doing is going in to discuss and, and appoint, um, a, a, a seventh school board member.
Amongst enough other stuff.
Correct, among, well, other stuff, but.
I think what the vote is.
That will be our vote. So may I kind of make a suggestion that the chair or the superintendent, anybody, call whoever that person is and let them know, and then they can put it out there, um, however they want to put it out there.
We, I mean, I'm, I think the, it's customary for the district to make that.
I'm just, I mean. I'm just trying to think of tech, you know, cause.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
How many, yeah, cause there's interesting parties that are on there. Yeah, I don't know.
Why can't we mute it? Let's just mute, turn off the audio and the video.
I don't know that I'm necessarily comfortable with the.
Doesn't always work.
I know it doesn't. You know, I, here's what we can do. I will record, when we come back into session, I will record it on my phone and we will, I can send that to the district. So you have the record.
Perfect.
I mean, this is not the official record anyway, the minutes are right, so.
But then again, can we just reach out and then put it on our media thing?
Put it on our website.
Because it's public at that point, after, as soon as the vote's made.
Yeah, right.
Put it on the website after you've notified the next person.
Okay, so at this point, I'll poll the board to go non-public. Tammy?
Yes.
Jasmine?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yep.
Ryan, yes E? Jay, yes? So we'll go as a non-public.
I was curious if this was because it's a special event and we decided to bring it. So that's not in here. Oh, that, oh, that's what that is, okay. Okay.